He has some minor computer problems, but he will be joining us. So we're going to go ahead and convene. Regular meeting in Windsor Heights City Council called the order. Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Here.
Mike LaFredo.
Here.
And Teresa Harms.
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. I would like to add discussion of the events committee. As item D back in the back on new business.
Can we also add in to discuss purchasing AV equipment for movies in the park? I don't know if that's included in your your talk, but if we could include that also.
I was going to include that in that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Brick, is that allowed?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute you for a second. Mayor, is your plan just to have a discussion or an action item?
Discussion.
Yep, it's allowed.
Thank you. I just want to confirm. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the agenda so amended.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones. I see he's he's here. And then Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is public forum set aside for comments from public on topics of city business other than what's on the agenda. We will not take any action. Date your name, address for the record. No more than five minutes. I see we have several people from the public out there. Edie.
Lauren.
No comments. Next item is motion to approve the consent agenda consent agenda. Any item can be removed if you so like.
Both to approve.
Back in.
Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones. And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2102. Amending the code of ordinances by amending city code, chapter 156 relating to property maintenance and rental house code. Housing code.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion of that motion? Okay, roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones. I think we lost him. And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration to waive the third and final reading of the same ordinance. Is there a motion to waive it?
Yes, there is. So moved. Move it.
Susan G. Second.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Well, we're glad you're here, Mike, because the next item is presentation of the Pontefex Public Safety Compensation Study. This will not be any action to be taken. Dave, Peter Ronza, you are in attendance. Would you like to address this?
Dave, can I ask a question? Did we get to item B on the old business?
On where?
Item B under old business?
Yes.
Okay, so we've done.
Just voted on that.
Okay, so we vote voted on both of those. Okay.
Mr. Ronza, would you like to take the stage and go through your compensation study?
I think you're still muted, Pete. I'm going to share my screen with you. Good evening to everyone. I'm just basically going to walk through the report. Just one word that just this morning, we updated just one small portion of the report, which is the compensation analysis for the fire captain that will be coming at you. But the rest of the report, the other 99% of it is exactly what you have in front of you. In summary, what we were asked to do is conduct a compensation study, standard compensation study for the city to determine what the competitive labor rates are for the positions you asked us to look at. Also give you some recommendations on our findings and the data. So we'll walk through that. Just to go to page five. You know, the standard reason and pretty standard, what you were asking is what pretty much everyone is asking is that we derive for you the data to determine what the labor rates are for your job so that you can then develop a strategy and a philosophy to therefore achieve what a compensation system achieves, which is attraction, retention, and motivation of talent. And that's pretty standard. It's covered in this page. These these next pages, I think it's important that we look at the status of the labor market. It is true that you know COVID-19 in 2020 still has had some impacts that we don't know what the total implication is. But one thing we are seeing both in all sectors is we're seeing renewed interest in making sure that compensation plans are aligned to the market. We're seeing a lot of heat in certain areas, a lot of competitiveness, and we are finding firms that are having absolutely no problem poaching kidnapping, stealing, whichever term you want to use, talent from other organizations, especially as the organizations are ramping up. And some organizations have been at a heated pace. So the labor market from our perspective is did not suffer the kind of retroactive movement that it did during the 2008 recession, just to use that recent example. Page six, what I want to call attention to is, you know, after this report, this report is basically giving you the folks who run the city, the data you need so that you can then amongst yourselves develop a strategy and a philosophy of where you want to be. And this is just to show you across the United States when organizations set their strategy and philosophy as far as compensation. As you can see, the majority like to position themselves to where they can pay to market so that they can compete with the market with some exceptions. But so letting you know that is pretty much the norm. Also looking at trends, sometimes we'll run into questions as to does one sector move at a different pace than another sector? So what you see here from the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics is a snapshot from 2009 to 2019, which is the last year that we have complete data of how the two different sectors, private sector and government sector have moved. And within that, the different disciplines within the sectors. And as you can see, both sectors have pretty much moved at the same pace over that period of time. In other words, post recession to the year 2019, which you could technically classify as pre-COVID. We should have 2020 figures in about two or three months. But it just gives you a snapshot. Again, it's real important to know what's going on in the market. And I think page eight is one of the most important pages as you look at that. Some folks, I mean, I'm old enough, remember the 80s where we had double-digit inflation and employers had no choice but to give high increases because of that double-digit inflation. So we run into clients sometimes who use the CPI in order to determine what their wage increases are. That is not really what the CPI is built for. CPI, you know, it measures the the change in the price of salad dressing, tires, shirts, gasoline, et cetera. A better figure also put out by the U.S. Department of Labor. So what we call the ECI or the Employment Cost Index. And you can see in those two columns to the right, the figures over the last years for public sector and private sector. This is actually something you don't have to hire a consultant in future years as you compose your budget, as you're trying to put a budget together for your future years. And you want some kind of an index to let you know how the labor market's moving. All you got to do is go to their website free of charge. And that ECI is a really good indicator, as you can tell, of how to determine where the labor market's going and at what rate. So that as you maintain your system, it's not sexy to talk about maintaining it. We're going to talk about that at the end, but it's very important. I equate it to, you know, changing the oil in your car, checking the air in the tires. Every compensation system will break apart if it's not administered. This gives you a nice tool in the future to be able to trend and to be able to make some intelligent decisions when you budget for compensation. So I'm going to move to the study itself, just some brief words on methodology. You are a public sector organization and in the small group of jobs that we were given, most of those are particular to the public sector. So that is your logical competitor for labor. We did compose a list of labor market competitors. When we look at labor market competition, well, we look at various factors. First of all, we look at who is again attraction and retention for talent. You got to get them and you got to keep them. So who are your logical competitors? This is a combination of size, geography, finance, et cetera. You happen to be in an area, in a metropolitan area where you're surrounded by other entities. That is important to us when we're looking at competitors. We call it commutable distance competition. And that means that if you have a skill set that is used by other cities, other counties, other jurisdictions, and that is the one that you're trying to attract and retain, you have to be cognizant of the fact that if an individual does not have to move, they do not have to relocate. Some cases they do want to, but in most cases, those competitors around you from a geographic perspective are going to be the ones you have to worry about. Again, because of the issue that the individuals don't have to change. They may commute a little shorter, commute a little longer. So that's a primary concern. Also, you want to look at again who employs those jobs. And as we go out and compare your jobs to jobs in the market, it's job description to job description. Job titles, that would be malpractice to do something of that nature. So what we do is we take your job description, we look at the other entities. If it matches, that's data we use. If it does not match, that is data we do not use. And we go out and get that data. One advantage of the public sector is you can go out and get that data from your competitors. When we do this in private sector, we use surveys. All the data is effective January 1st of 2021. A couple of important notes. When we're doing this, we're looking at jobs, not people. Sometimes that sounds cruel and inhuman to folks. But what we're doing is we're going out there, looking at your competitors, and we want to find out what is the minimum and the maximum value that they give a job or a skill set. And that is what we go out to trap so that then we can not only determine what those average rates are, but that we can assist you in giving you a recommendation for you building a structure, again, that allows you to attract and retain, taking into account what they're classifying as their minimum and maximum value. The report is just that. It's a report. As I said, you guys will have to go out and devise a strategy, position yourself and determine, taking into account all the little, all the things that the city has to take into account as far as finances, competitive posture, difficulty of recruitment, difficulty of retention, et cetera. You'll have to take those into account, but you'll have this data to assist you. When it comes to one of your jobs there at the bottom of the page, the public safety director, you happen to have a position that is a combination of police and fire. Amongst the comparable group, we only found one. In our professional opinion, if you look at the skill sets of the position and if you took the position of saying, you know, if your current public safety director, let's say, won the lottery and left you and you had to replace that individual, that your market, as you cast your web on the ocean of applicants, would most likely come from those individuals who are in the police chief or are interested in police chief positions. So we think from a professional standpoint, benchmarking to that job is going to be the most accurate. Then determining what would be a good rate for you to set for attraction and retention. So the first thing we looked at, as I mentioned just a minute ago, is we looked out at the market is what is their minimum midpoint and maximum rates for their salary ranges for the jobs that they have that are comparable to the jobs that you're trying to benchmark to market. So here on page 11, what you see is those market average rates for the minimum value, midpoint value and maximum value for those jobs or skill sets. We also did a couple of other cuts here on page 12, just to give you as much data as different viewpoints that you can look at. The top set is your city, your current city incumbent employees compared to the average of the salaries of the incumbents in the other comparable jobs in the agencies that we surveyed. And then the bottom set, we took your current employees at your city, their average salaries. And then we compared that to the market average midpoint rates that you saw on page 11. And then compared that, as I said, the police, the fire, excuse me, the fire captain has been updated a little. So you'll see those numbers will just deviate just a titch from what you have, but you'll have this report tomorrow. So those are the three different data cuts. We'll talk about those in a little bit. We also want to look at benefits. Benefits unlike compensation, it's not apples to apples. It's more like oranges to grapefruits. So what you want to do is you want to stay loyal to one thing that employees share, and that is what is the percentage of contribution that an employer is expending on the part of their covering their employees' benefits and the employees covering their benefits? That's a neutral figure that we can satisfactorily benchmark from organization to organization. So we give you a couple of cuts here from the Kaiser Family Foundation survey, which is a really good survey. We look at all employers, private and public in the state of Iowa, and give you the average of what the employees are contributing for those three different coverage categories for medical insurance. Then here in the middle, you have what your employees are contributing on those three different categories. And then on the bottom set of figures, you have what your competitors, who we asked for the compensation information. We also asked for this information, what their employees on average are paying for those three different coverage categories. So that you can then, again, as you're devising your strategy, philosophy, and look from a total compensation perspective, you may want to take this into account to see if that's something that you want to look at. We were asked to look at paid time off. You happen to have a paid time off or PTO type of program of the agencies that we looked at. Only four of them had PTO plans. But we went ahead and presented you with the data for that as to how your city on PTO compares to those labor market competitors that had PTO programs compared to you. So that you have that data as well. Your jobs did not have salary ranges, do not have salary ranges. So we were asked as part of this study if we could provide a recommendation to you. And I'll walk through those recommendations as far as establishing a salary range and the rationale behind that. Another reason we want to make sure that we explain this is in the future, your employees will now have the ability to be able to maintain the system. You won't have to hire someone like me again. I'll be giving you everything laid out so that your staff can easily do this themselves and be able to provide you updates at your request. We did, as I mentioned in this first bullet, we did use the actual salary range rates for your for your competitors because that is a neutral number. That represents, again, I can't emphasize it enough, minimum and maximum value that they give a job. Average base salaries, using those to construct the salary range is very dangerous because you don't know what the particulars are behind the workforces at those different agencies. So for example, if you just had a layoff and you kept most of your senior folks, logically, your average salary would be higher. If you had an incentive retirement system in lieu of a layoff and most of your most senior people left, then you would have lower rates. Actually, I have a client that had 10,000 employees. They're a county in the West. They just let 500 employees go. Most of those were an incentive system. So their average salaries for their workforce actually decreased dramatically. What does that mean? It means that in that organization it did, but it's kind of a polluted figure. So its pay structure rates are neutral. And again, it's going to be easy for your employees to be able to benchmark in the future using those figures as they are accurate on the minimum and maximum value. And again, we are looking at jobs, not at people. We were asked, and I'm going to walk through that also in this in this report. Yeah.
Do some of the places that you surveyed, do they have cafe plans? Here's your package of compensation, and you can put it wherever you want to turn the benefits or salary.
We did not run into that cafeteria plan. Usually in the cafeteria plans, how an organization will establish that is they'll determine a total compensation figure. So let's say they'll determine what the compensation figure is and then a differential percentage, be it 30, 35, 38%, and then come up with a spreadsheet that then gives the employee a spend. And then on one column, they'll put the costs of all the benefits. And as the employee marks down what they want, anything in excess of the spend will come out of their check. Anything under the spend will go to their compensation. Something that was kind of popular in the late 80s, early 90s. Most organizations and the reason because of the heat of the labor market, also we have an issue. People who are 40 or younger are more concerned really when you're approaching them for attraction, especially for retention. They're looking at two things. How are you going to make me better? In other words, development, skills, knowledge, making me better at my profession and pay. It's very hard to communicate, even though it's a real cost benefits to that population as you're going to attract and retain. But we did not run into anyone who reported to us that they have a cafeteria computation to be able to determine wages.
My follow-up to that is certainly the money that goes into pay from the cafe plan or any compensation plan by the employee is not taxable money. Those benefits is my understanding.
Well, it could be taxable. It could be taxable because let me use the example again. You ask a good question. So let's say for some reason, maybe I'm taking my spouse's insurance, et cetera. So I'm not going to take an under a cafe plan. I'm not going to take these benefits so that excess between my spend and what I'm spending would then go back into my check as compensation, then that would be taxable. You are correct that if I am using it for medical dental vision, those benefits that are covered by the IRS to be pre-taxed, then that would not be taxable. You are correct. Absolutely.
I just think that's important for some families and individuals consider that. So that's the reason I kind of like the cafe plans.
Yep. Um, so I wanted to stress that last paragraph at the end, although we were asked to give you recommendations, and I'm going to cover that a little bit. Again, I know I mentioned this before, but it's real important. We're looking at the position and the worth of the job, not the individual employee in the job because that's something an organization has to do because there's a whole slew of factors that come into play as to determine where an employee should be in a salary range. So just to make that clear. This, again, it's not sexy, but it's important. But the good news is your folks will be able to do this. You won't have to hire somebody like me again. But we always recommend at least a minimum of every 24 months that you go back and just look at where you are with the market. You don't want to get too disconnected from the market, especially these last five or six years as as fast and as hot as the market has been moving. And there's a real danger there because you may have success at attracting people, but you don't want to be known as a training ground to your competitors. So that if you do start deviating a certain percentage from the market, you would expose yourself to that. But the good news is your staff will be able to do this, and they could do it every year if they wanted to. But they should at least do it every two years. Just go over some of the recommendations. So the first thing we were asked just to provide you a recommendation so that you guys can have a discussion is if we were to compose salary ranges, because you don't have them right now, what would those look like? So again, we went with the midpoints of the market. That is the driving number, the midpoint column in the middle. Then we looked at your market as well in this third set. We saw that it was plus or minus 35% spreads. We rounded that to a 40% spread. What a spread does is it gives you the ability, whether an individual's coming in in a minimal set, also allows for career progression to a maximum number so that an individual's career in a position in a job, if they did not want to promote or move, will allow the ability for you to be able to compensate them, retain them, and motivate them if you later decide to do things like paper performance merit, et cetera. So salary range gives you flexibility. It also gives you a flexibility. If during your recruitment, you find that you are fortunate and you uncovered an individual that you want to hire that has an above-average set of knowledge, skills, experience, et cetera, it gives you the ability to hire them in the range, commensurate with those skill sets that you're getting from them so that you can make sure again that you're positioning them correctly, both for traction and retention. When we did this mathematically, you'll notice the police lieutenant was, we tried to create what's called vertical and horizontal linearity. The vertical is very important because one of the key killers of a compensation system over time is what we call compression. And that is when one group is moving at a different rate than another, that can inhibit your ability to promote, to incent people to assume other positions, et cetera. So what we constructed here was a mathematical vertical separation. So on that police captain figure, we created a midpoint in the middle there so that that will have appropriate spacing between the ranks in the police department. Also appropriate spacing under them with your collective bargaining units. And if you maintain this, you should not encounter issues of compression where one group is moving against the other. And again, where then you're going to have some subsidiary problems of attraction and retention. So that was the structure. We were also asked if we would just give you the our recommendations. So again, that you could talk about it. If we were to look at your existing employees in those recommended salary ranges, how we would position them? We looked at one factor, which is usually a common factor to get you to a conversation, which is how long the employee has been in that job and then what is their comp ratio? And I explain in their comp ratio is a formula we use in compensation that basically it divides the employee's salary by the midpoint. 1.0 would be considered the midpoint. So anything under one, you're under the midpoint. Anything over one, you're over the midpoint. So just looking at employment in the job date in the job, we we recommended some comp ratios. And again, these are recommendations for you guys to have a conversation of where we would neutrally, just based on that factor of employment date and job, where we thought a minimal logical comp ratio would be for those individual employees in the new salary range. Because again, you don't have a salary range right now. Those again are recommendations for you guys to have a discussion, but that is one way that you can use to be able to position people in the range. Obviously, in the future, you would have to move them in the range based on whatever your policies, procedures, your strategy and your philosophy is to move them through there based on whatever factors you choose to incorporate. But we gave you something to start a conversation with, which is pretty common on how organizations analyze whether their employees are in appropriate place in the salary range. Appendix B has the survey participants. On the left-hand side, you see the column of the agencies that were used to compare all of the jobs in this report. On the right-hand column, you see an additional group that was used to supplement in the director of public safety jobs. And again, those are looking at your logical market for attraction retention, looking at a variety of geography, size, mission, et cetera. And the figures I think that were provided to you is an addendum that's in your packet for your agenda. List the raw data for. List the raw data for that so that you can see that. And as I mentioned before, now your employees will be able to go out there. They'll be able to do this all on their own and benchmark and keep that, uh, and, and be able to see trends. Between year to year, uh, which is what a lot of organizations find valuable.
Let me ask another, or share another observation. If I look at this chart on page seventy-one. It looks like the cities that are reporting. Um, are kind of limited, but they're, um, if you look at populations, they're larger. Uh, than Windsor Heights, quite a bit larger, some of them. And, uh, they have a lot more s- square mileage of ge- geography to cover. And their spans of control certainly are different. So. Uh, I was hoping, you know, we, we would be able to get like, uh, Newton, Polk City and some of these smaller ones. As well. So, uh, anyway, that's just an observation I have.
No, let me answer that. That's a good observation. Like I said before, we look at a variety of factors, not just size. Now you may decide as you do. Compensation strategy, that that is the factor that you consider paramount. Uh, what we're, what we're looking at.
Please understand, Peter, I'm not saying that.
Oh, no, no, no. I just want to, I think you bring up an excellent question. No, I just want to talk about it because you bring up an excellent question because. Determining a comparable group is a conversation and, um. I think you bring up, uh, I do have organizations sometimes that. Have a different strategy in that, that becomes their strategy and there's nothing wrong with that. Um, I just, like I said before, we find that the, that the best tool for attraction and retention. Is look at your possible. You are absolutely right. Whenever you do a compensation study, it's almost like Goldilocks. You're going to find too hot, too cold and just right. You're going to find organizations that are larger, but they are competitors. You know that you can't, they have larger scale. That they can't pay, but you will be either on attraction, retention or both. Competing with them for talent. You can't match their rates. But you're also going to have organizations when you go out and survey, they're going to be smaller than you. So the key is to get a feel for the overall market and then decide where you're going to position yourself. Using that data of what the overall market looks like. No, be asked a good question. Cause that's one of the conversation pieces you guys have to figure when you look at, um, if you want to refine your comparable group.
Yeah, because I don't see any cities that are smaller than you. Any, anyway, but that's fine. Go ahead. I would just make.
No, I'm done. No, I just wanted to answer because that was a great question. Yeah. So I just want to answer that. Yeah. But I'm really, uh.
The market data.
Questions.
The market data that you're talking about is, uh. I guess derived from the comparable agencies for all city jobs, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so on Mr. LaFredo's note. Um, I believe that with the exception of Carlisle and Polk City. Uh, all of these cities are at least three times the size of Windsor Heights. And how do we rectify? So for example, like. Uh, you look at Polk City and the administrative services clerk. They don't have one. Um, Polk City, there's no salary for a fire captain. So presumably they don't have one. Uh, Carlisle Police Lieutenant, nothing. So they don't have one. Therefore, we're left with data. Um, a lot of which is from only these larger agencies. So it seems to me that the. You know, the, the averages are going to be substantially high because we're talking about all these cities that are very, very large.
Well then, yeah, you're going to use that data then, like I said, to devise your strategy. So if you believe. That those are higher than where you should position yourself, then you would have to determine. What percentage of the market, as I mentioned in that page, where employers determine where they want to position themselves to market. What percentage you consider a differentiator to then construct your compensation system from that point. You're always going to have competitors who are not going to have the exact job. And like I said, if we don't have a match. Or if when we talk to them, they believe they didn't have a match, we're not going to include that. The smaller the agency, the more propensity that you're going to find non-matches. Um, especially since smaller agencies will have a tendency to have jack of all trades rather than specific jobs. Uh, and some may have one mission that you have and not have the other. Um, so again, the data is there so you can determine your strategy. We believe, a- as I mentioned before, that this is the pool. Which you have to compete to, to attract and retain. The question is, where do you want to create your ranges? Where do you want to position yourself? Comparing to that data to attract and retain talent. And that's the strategy you're going to have to design.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, pro- part of, uh, it's a subjective evaluation probably. But for me at least, it's important. And that is the quality of life that the smaller city has for you. And so I think that's to me, is important to me. It may not be to everybody. But, uh, it probably isn't to everybody, yeah. But, uh, so I think there's some intrinsic things that are made, that, that aren't really measurable. Uh, again, the, the number of residents, the span of control would be different positions. And, uh, the, uh, geographic area size. So that just, again, I'm not being critical of the study. Just an observation again.
Now, was anything taken into account as far as, um, take home vehicles? You know, the city's paying for all of the maintenance for the gas. Is that i- in any of this at all? And this.
That would be subsidiary benefits. If you're looking for, uh, perks or subsidiary benefits that. When we have to construct the salary structure, we, we have to compare those apples to apples of base to base. So as to consider a foundation, any kind of subsidiary benefits or subsidiary compensation. Again, is going to be dependent upon your strategy and your philosophy. Uh, but the base system has to exist. It's kind of like the, the, the foundation of the house that you have to build before you can get to those. Ancillary, uh, compensation elements.
Thank you.
Peter, I, were you done with your presentation, I think?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm, uh, basically waiting to see if you guys had any other questions or anything.
I think Dave was talking and, uh, he's still muted.
Yes, I was. Thank you, Susan. That's what I was just asking Dennis is that I think this is just a, uh, a file and it'll be taken up at a later point in time. Thank you, Mr. Ronza.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Good job. Appreciate the, your work that you did on this. So thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Have a good one.
Welcome.
Travis, I believe we need a, uh, motion to accept and file or whatever our terminology is for that report.
Received.
Yeah, that's the council's wishes. I think we can certainly do that.
It says no action to be taken on the actual agenda.
No, there's no action.
Question for Matt or Aaron.
Yeah, you don't have to take any action at all with it, but if you want to just acknowledge you've received it. You can receive and file, even though it says no action. The anticipation is no action on the compensation study, not that you're not receiving it, but. To Councilmember Harms' point, you don't have to do anything at all if you don't want to.
I think we need to, uh, receipt and file, motion to do that.
So moved.
Again.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is consideration of twenty-eight E agreement with City of Urbandale and City of Plive. Related to the fire tower, which is jointly owned by all parties. Motion to accept the twenty-eight E agreement.
Vote to approve.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-five. Setting the time and place of March one, twenty-twenty-one for public hearing. For the purposes of considering the maximum tax dollars for certain levies. For the city's proposed fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
Vote to approve.
Now, all we're approving is that we're going to consider it.
Yes.
We're setting a public hearing.
Okay, so we're not voting on anything.
No.
Only on consideration, decided for March one.
Okay, I understand.
I'll second.
Any discussion of that particular date?
And so on that date, we'll have more discussion about the budget.
Uh, yeah, that will be a public hearing.
Okay. That would be nice. We haven't had any discussion about it before as a, as a, as a council, so that would be, uh, appreciated.
Well, but that's a novel idea, Mike.
Yeah.
So if we have our discussion. If we have our discussion March first, then how long do we have to make changes or whatever to? This, I mean, do, is this something that we should be talking about prior to the public hearing? Um.
Probably.
I mean.
Fair.
I.
Yeah, a month.
It seems that, uh, memories are short, it seems with this process and. The, um, public hearing that you're scheduling this evening is just for the max levy. This is not for the budget. On that date, when you have the public hearing and discuss the max levy and vote on the max levy. You will also be scheduled to set a public hearing for the budget. This will allow you the first opportunity as a group to discuss the budget. And then two weeks later, on March fifteenth, you'll have your public hearing on the budget, which you then will have another second opportunity. To discuss your budget. If there are any changes between now and that final day. We have plenty of time worked into the calendar that we can work those changes into. So.
Dennis, when does it need to be turned into the state?
The end of March.
Maybe the end of March, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because. Oops, I should work in there.
Dennis, does the, the max levy have anything to do with the budget?
The only thing it has to do with is what you're going to, uh, um, set as your levy for pu- for property taxes.
Is that a yes?
Uh, it, yes, it does have something to do with the budget.
Okay.
Okay, but when, when, when we met at individually with you and, and, uh, the department heads. Um. I believe Rochelle reported, and I know she's here tonight, that, uh. Uh, that it was going to remain the same.
That's correct. That's the proposal. If the, if there are council members that wish to increase. Or reduce the levy, then that information should come to us as soon as possible and we can have that. Uh, as a topic of discussion for this public hearing on March first.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? If not, let's do roll call and we'll shut it.
Okay, Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Dennis, Dennis, can I just add one more thing? Um, I think most of us would certainly like the levy to go down, but we understand at this point. Uh. That holding it steady is, is, is an achievement itself. So at least I do.
Good. I, I appreciate that comment. Um, one thing that we wrestled with was. The opportunity balanced with the opportunity to reduce the tax levy, but also continue on basic services going forward and. One strategy that some communities do that's very short sighted is they will take. Uh, fund balance revenue that they have sitting in their account. And they'll use that as a stopgap for a basic services one year and then at the same time reduce their tax levy. What that eventually causes is a couple of years later, when that fund balance is burned down to mi- its minimum. That a community will have to come back and raise taxes again, just to support basic services. And I think right now we just want to avoid that at all costs. We do not want to have to come back to the taxpayers of Windsor Heights. And ask for a tax increase just to, to support basic services.
It was, it was lower, I think, two dollars and five cents last budget, the levy was.
Mm-hmm.
And so, yeah, you wouldn't want to all of a sudden start jacking it up on them. And so, yeah, I think that's. The way it should be.
Yes, and during our individual meetings, if you'll recall, Rochelle talked a little bit about the debt service levy. And because of this new debt that the city's taken on just in the past year and a half to, to pay for these very substantial road projects. It would have been more appropriate for the city to raise the debt levy. To match the amount of money we needed now to pay for that debt. But we, since we have a reserve in that fund, we use that reserve just this year to keep the tax rate the same and not raise that tax rate. And we did that basically because the, um, future of our economy is a little uncertain right now. We don't know what. Lies ahead in the next twelve months. Um, we do not know what the, um, long-term impacts of COVID-nineteen shutdowns will be on our local economy and. University Street and further, uh, up on Hickman. So we just want to go with a status quo instead of moving one way or the other.
Dennis, Dennis, we'll, we have to continue to reserve that or use that reserve, uh, for the debt.
Yeah, we'll just give you an option to keep that debt levy the same going forward. Eventually though, that that reserve will run out and I think Rochelle's predicting that that's going to be about a three to five-year. Period right now.
Yeah, it's, it's between three to five years depending.
So. How do you build that back up, Rochelle? Or do you?
You raise the levy, you raise the rate.
Okay, or you don't spend more than, uh.
Or you don't borrow anymore.
Well, I don't think we need to right now, I would hope. Uh, so, a- anyway, yeah, yeah.
I think we're definitely on the right track using the little bit of reserves that we had to. It's just a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars that we had to use. And there's five hundred thousand in the, um. In the reserve for the debt, debt levy. So I think we're okay.
Yeah, I just don't think we want to really, uh. Raise the levy after it was significantly lowered. Prior years.
Exactly.
I mean, some of us, and I think more than just me, are a, uh. Um, really involved with the Central Iowa Taxpayers Association and. And, and it's. We find is our most important job is to protect the taxpayers' dollars. And these exorbitant tax increases. Uh, for all the cities, which we, as well as the counties way out in that field. And school districts are way out. Uh, yeah, we want to do our part, certainly as the cities. Uh, to try to control that. And so, that, that's what I would work for. Because we don't have any control over what the county does or what the schools do, which they continue to raise. So.
I think we're doing our part to hold the line. Excuse me, Dennis, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment that my job and staff's job is to make sure that we can live within our means without any tax. Increases.
That's great, yeah.
I can't imagine that happening, but when the council did vote to approve borrowing all this money for these road projects. They should have been made aware that it was going to require a tax increase for the debt levy.
Well.
That's just a foregone conclusion. And so what Rochelle is doing, which I applaud her. And totally support her, what she's saying is, instead of hitting the taxpayer with this increase now. We have fund reserve that we can use to keep this going. And who's to say that in three to five years, the valuations might not grow to a point where. No additional tax rate increase might be required. So. Let's see how the economy does next year and then let's revisit this issue next year to decide. The council can decide whether they want to raise the debt levy like was planned on when the, but, when. The council can decide whether they want to raise the debt levy like was planned on when the, but when this debt was issued. Or you may be able to grow your way out of a, a debt levy increase over five to ten years.
You know, we, we're not growing and, uh, so.
Well, Mr. LaFredo, every property grows from year to year and that's what, that's what builds in an increase in revenues.
I know the assessment of that and, and the assessments go up and.
That's what I'm talking about, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So in five years, the assessments may have gone up enough where the city can still refrain from raising the debt levy?
Double edged sword, anyway, I'll stop, Dennis.
Okay.
Did we get roll call on that, Travis?
I'm not yet, no. Scaries?
Yes.
Uh, Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item is the item that we added called Discussion of Events Committee. Uh, we have had several discussions of this over the last year. We would like to start a new special events program, creation of an events planning committee, which is being proposed for consideration. This is for discussion tonight. Uh, membership would be City of Windsor Heights, Chamber of Commerce, Foundation, and a couple of residents for which we will take applications for. Uh, it, membership will be reviewed and renewed annually per action of the committee. Uh, city staff will provide support for activities, meetings, fundraising, and communication. The initial meetings will be to develop the bylaws and rules and so on for that. Uh, there's no budget for it and Susan, to address what you're, uh, were asking about there is that would be something that the committee would approach the city on, uh, at, but since we're already aware of it, I'm sure that city staff, Dennis and so on, will take that under consideration. Has anybody got any comments on that?
Uh, my comment, Dave, would be, um, much like the foundation, um, theirs is funded through foundations or for donations, contributions to the foundation. And, uh, they could be certainly a part of this effort. And, uh, I'm always cautious about committing any taxpayer dollars uh, to something that, it is nice, I'm not a suggested man, but that's what my, my background is.
One, one of the things that we have done in the past is when we, uh, something is brought to the city for, let's say, use of the park for, uh, paying liquor li- you know, paying for the liquor, paying for the troops that have to, uh, support them down in the park or wherever. Uh, that is still one-way direct or indirect as an expenditure of the city. So what I'm suggesting is that, let's say, uh, let's just use an example. Susan, you and Joseph want to do movie and movies in the park. You bring that to that committee with the who, what, where, why, how, and what you're going to need from both yourselves and what you're going to need in terms of the city. City will look at it and be able to tell you, you know, we can provide the barricades, we can provide the, uh, uh, blocking off and whatever. But bring it to a central committee that has experience in setting these things up and making other comments. It's like doing the, uh, uh, Fourth of July, uh, parade. We have people within our community that I would expect that we would have on this committee, uh, that have experience in doing these various things that maybe somebody new and wants to put something on, this would be, they can come and propose it and maybe get guidelines from there.
Dave, I think there could be sponsorships about the activities too, whether it's Hy-Vee or whoever. For, for those activities to get their name on, um, on something out there. Um, Hy-Vee sponsored, uh, movies in the park or whatever. And, uh, so I, I think those are things available, uh, of fundraising efforts because it's not a lot of money, I wouldn't think, so, in, in the big scheme of things. So I think there's those options to raise some money from a few of, 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 uh, companies here, uh, and stores as well as individuals. I know, uh, um, Theresa, you were part of this when they, when they, uh, paid for, the foundation did for the Harmony Park, there were several donations, you know, and you were one of them, uh, to, to be a part of it. And so, that's many times how the, uh, the extra things were paid for.
Dennis, am I missing anything?
I think Susan wanted to make a couple of comments about, uh, some things that she's been discussing.
Okay.
I see Theresa's hands up, so I'll let her talk since she started before me and I'll finish up.
Um, I really don't care if you talked before me or whatever, I'm, I'm open to either, but, um, I just was curious if, uh, Dave, if you'd had any conversations then with the chamber at all or the foundation? I know they kind of have their own, um, events committees too. I'm not suggesting they are or not um, working together, but I feel like that that's where most of our synergies have been in the past is in collaboration with, so I just didn't know if you were thinking that that was a joint structure, if there was a position for each one of those entities on the committee, how or what's your vision for that?
My comment is there, as we were talking about the city, Representatives, Chamber, Foundation, couple of residents, we could add other people if they're there and then go from there. This is just a concept that we've, I talked to you about a couple of other conversations that we've had about, should we do this or maybe should we not? This is a little bit more and I think you all got a copy of what Dennis sent out, uh, as far as setting this up, so. Uh, I thought I would bring it out in the open and, uh, we'll go from there because, like, way.
Yeah, I think, I think the business component would be really helpful to have involved.
Okay. Susan, you had comments?
Um, just looking ahead to Movies in the Park, um, looking back on memories, we did, uh, some uh, Movie in the Park in February already of last year. So, trying to plan ahead for this next upcoming season, spring, summer, fall, whatever it may be. Um, but we have, we've been borrowing AV equipment from, um, Darren Fife, from Lauren Campbell, uh, whoever else, we can piecemeal stuff together it with. Uh, the last movie that we had, we actually broke the screen for the movie, um, backdrop, uh, when wind hit it and knocked it over. So I'm just looking, um, to see if council would, um, support kind of looking. Yes, the wind broke. I had nothing to do with it and nor, nor did Lauren. The wind actually broke it. But, uh, just wondering if.
A lot of wind, often.
It was, it was like a freak wind show. I have no idea what happened. Um, if, if there's, you know, enough people behind this to kind of put into, um, a motion to ask the city administrator to kind of have staff look into the costs of AV equipment, um, and see kind of what our costs would be so that we could look into purchasing them, uh, using this, maybe this budget or going into next budget.
Unfortunately, we sold all of our stuff.
Yes.
This would be part of the deal is that, uh, let's say you and Joseph brought your presentation to the committee and that would require the AV equipment, then the question would be is we can provide it, maybe they can provide it, you can provide it, that's just one of the considerations. The other is.
Dave, I, I, I reminded Susan that that eight V equipment that Darren has is what he bought because Public Works wanted to get rid of it from their building and that's what he has. Uh, which was sold, that really cheap.
Well, irregardless of what the history is, the question is.
It's important, I think it's important because of your, you own it and, and then you don't, you know, it's a good idea and then it rains and it just sits around. I don't know, I just, just an observation.
Well, the other thing is if we're waiting until this committee comes about, you know, we're looking at having to come up with something for these movies that are upcoming. You know, I, I don't think that this committee is going to come out jumping in March and I just don't want to get behind. Plus, we also have money in the budget, in the special events budget already in, you know, for this fiscal year, um, to kind of use that towards the AV equipment.
You could possibly consider Su- to Susan partnering with, um, uh, the Montessori School or Cloud Academy to, you know, promoting with kids and of course they have that kind of equipment. Not that they would want to lend it out, but, uh, it just puts one more element included in the community event, but.
I, if I look to the formal proposal or whatever, I mean, I don't know, are you just going to appoint some folks or is that, um, are you going to have a, what's the next step again? That's my question. What's the next step? How do we, you have a discussion?
When we get done with any discussion here, Dennis will, and I will sit down and we'll go through, but from the city standpoint, um, chamber will talk to Edie and them and see who they want on there, talk to Dave on the foundation. Uh, like I said, I would like to take applications from a couple of residents that have an interest in doing that. We can do this all pretty quick.
Uh, Mayor, Lauren Campbell would like to speak.
Yes, Lauren, go ahead.
Thanks so much. Um, so just a, a quick, um, in- input from, uh, on behalf of the chamber, I would say. Um, so, uh, to, uh, Ms. LaFredo's comment about, um, getting sponsorship. I think, um, well, the chamber would want to be strategic and, and who we're asking for what sponsorship when, um, you know, we are trying to plan out our entire year and we knew about, for example, Movies in the Park, we know roughly what the sponsorship looks like, so we're kind of pitching that all at once, trying to get, um, uh, trying to get the most money from our members without them feeling like we're constantly coming to them and asking for money. And so I just, um, I think that, uh, making it as part of a partnership is really important, but also just having, um, a long-term um, or a bigger picture plan for, um, for who we're asking for money when.
Well, the, the money Lauren is wanting, but, but you want to get people involved, uh, regardless of the money.
Yeah, no, I was just, uh, commenting on, on your point about getting sponsors and, and, you know, you mentioned Hy-Vee and other sponsors and we're just trying to be strategic for a long time. Hy-Vee was kind of.
Interesting, and I'm not trying to negate that, but I'm just suggesting there's a lot of entities that can not only be helpful, um, but they can bring people in, get people involved too.
Yep.
There's signs of Hy-Vee or Dairy Queen or whatever. So, that's just my thought, you know, try to, try to have a big, uh, big tent.
Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you.
As you all remember, we disbanded this committee for the simple reason that we ran out, the committee ran out of volunteers, the money wasn't there, we don't have enough volunteers and so on to support it. This is reinventing it as a clearing committee, so to speak. So if somebody wants to present an, or put on an event and is going to require city assets or use of city property, they'll bring it to the committee and explain what it is they want so that we can support them as best we can with whatever entity we have available. That's a mouthful.
In other words, I think the committee has to decide what their, what their mission is and what it is, uh, and then go from there.
Basically, yeah. So in other words, if they've got, let's say you want to come and do something, Mike, and, uh, you make your presentation or send a, the email to them with what the info is and they have some suggestions or will be able to support it, you're in business.
Right, okay.
Dennis, anything more on that one?
Um, only to say that I think that the, there have been, there's been a number of good points made about why this committee should exist and I agree with all of them and I think, um, not least of which would be what Lauren touched on and that's fundraising. When you have, when you have six different groups and six different events fundraising at the same time, trying to get the same dollars for their event, there's going to be winners and losers. And so, one novel idea is to have one concerted effort, one committee that, uh, is being guided by the city that can get those sponsorships and be successful to benefit everybody. And so, um, that's, that's one other big point, but also to the, you have the AV equipment. Um, I feel like the next step would be to collect cost estimates and a design of what this AV equipment would be so that the council then can make a decision whether they want to pursue it or not. And so unless there's an objection, I will collect that information and bring it back to the council at a future date.
Sounds good to me. Any other comments, Dennis?
No, that's it. Thank you.
It did look like Matt, um, posted a comment uh, that says Kohl's doesn't have AV equipment that would work with Movie in the Park.
Right, yeah, I saw that.
Next item on the agenda then is, uh, council reports, Theresa.
Um, Public Safety met on Tuesday and we reviewed, uh, last Tuesday, um, we reviewed, um, the compensation study. We had a conversation about, um, the Westcom, which we're still, um, working on implementing and hope to have that uh, here in the next couple of months, uh, transition over to Westcom and then, um, uh, shared services, uh, brief discussion on shared services. So, know that those are the items that we currently have in our, uh, discussion. Our next meeting is May unless there's a reason for us to come back together.
Thank you.
Mike Jones?
Nothing for me, Dave. Thank you.
Mike LaFredo?
Dave, we just, uh, on the Public Works, we just haven't, um, heard from Dalton that there is any updated information regarding the flood mitigation. And, uh, so I think we're probably waiting for that. That's, that's our big issue. I mean, that's, that's a huge issue as we all know, so.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon?
I'll jump right in there and tell you where that's, that project is, um, Mike and the rest of the council. The city did an RFQ, they received five, uh, respondents that all were excellent quality, had a good reputation, so Dalton asked them for, um, costing information, an RFP. So when he has that information um, turned in, he will be presenting that to the Public Works however the Public Works meeting schedule, um, plan pans out.
Dennis, is that for, um, designing or, or giving options for, for the, uh, the flood issue?
Correct, yes.
Okay, good. Good, looking forward to it.
Susan?
Uh, the Economic Development, uh, Committee met, uh, last Thursday and, um, we were able to hear from Amber Lynch with Investamoin. Um, she brought up some great ideas that they're using and some possibly that we can look into, maybe not, you know, this year or next year, but in the years to follow. Um, so it was nice to hear her thoughts and, and comments on the issues. We also discussed, um, some of the, uh, updates on just construction a- across the, across Windsor Heights. So, that's about it.
Dennis, have you got anything further? Okay, I think we've got all of the, uh, Public Safety, Public Works and communications reports, all are attached in your packet. Uh, with nothing more to do, I accept the motion to adjourn to the.
Okay, Dave, I just mentioned one more thing. We got the Public Safety, um, annual report. And it's, it's well done, uh, and Chad should know that and I would assume that Whitney had a part of that too. So, anyway, that's it.
Okay. Any other comments before we take the adjournment motion? Roll call.
We need a motion for us, Mayor.
Move to adjourn.
That's second.
Now roll call.
Susan Scaries?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes. Yes.